Also the MPO, which is our road building network, and then also was able to serve for Mayor Baker and Mayor Foster on Tibard, the Southern County Transportation Authority that's created for the region. First of all, I commend you on a 17-minute budget hearing. That is amazing. I have council members that talk longer than that on our budget hearing. Well, really, why we're doing this, and I disagree with all of the things on there. The slides are taken out of context. I mean, I could spend the whole time having an argument, but I just, really what we're doing is giving people options. When I first got on PSTA, DOT came to us and told us that because Pinellas County is built out, 96% of the property that is available for development is developed already, and that what they can do with the road network is increase the lane mile by about 15, maybe 20% over the next 30 years. What we're doing with our vehicle miles is tripling that number, and they warned us that they can't keep up with it. And it took me about 15 minutes to get here from St. Petersburg today. I waited at the intersection of Olmerton and Dootcher four times to get through it. US-19 has been under construction. I've been coming down here since 1969. It's been under construction since 1969. And it's not that we shouldn't do those. This isn't a rail or bus versus car. This is about options that we don't have. We need to continue doing those road projects. We need to continue making US-19 a limited access highway. It's expensive, it's over budget, it's behind schedule, but we need to continue doing it. We really don't have the option. We shouldn't take that away, but what we don't have is other options for people. PSTA operates on the budget you showed. It's about a third of what other communities are tied, spend on transit. We move 15 million people, 15 million rides a year, and the way the rides are explained is absolutely correct. It's also the exact same way we count cars. So my trip to here today, I was counted once on Fifth Avenue North, I was counted once when I got on the interstate, I was counted when I got off the interstate, came down Olmerton, I was counted again on Gulf to Bay. So when I go home, it'll be eight rides to get home. We count them the same way that the roads do. But again, 14 million rides per year, that breaks the record, and what we have is just an underfunded system. The system runs 98% of the time on schedule. People complain it took an hour for the bus to get here. The bus was scheduled to be there an hour. That's all we can afford to do. What we have is, again, we've been having this conversation for a long time. We went out and talked to people. Before it became Greenlight, it was a combination of PSTA and the MPO, Tibard, the Pinellas Planning Council, really having this discussion, since we're built out, what are we going to do next? We are losing population. We're starting to change that trend a little bit now that the economy's coming out. The scary part of that isn't the 1% or 2% of the people we lost, it's where we lost them. Between 2000 and 2010, 20% of our 30-year-olds left this county. Those between 30 and 39-year-olds, that is where we lost 20% of that population. That's our kids. That's our future. That's our future employers. To me, that's a scary number. We're not attracting young people. We're stagnant in our businesses. We're at a competitive disadvantage. Businesses that are here are competing with other businesses in Charlotte, in Dallas, in Phoenix, places that have the ability to move around, their employees have options. Here in the Templegate area, 60% on average of your salaries go to housing and transportation. 60%. That's second only to Los Angeles. That's a huge disadvantage for business that moves here. It has to give their employees that much money just for a roof over their head and to get to work. It doesn't count groceries, medical care, entertainment. If you're a business that provides goods and services, your base of users are spending 60% of their money on those two factors. Those are the things we can change with providing people options for transportation. Currently, it costs between $8,000 and $10,000 to own a car. We're not saying you should get rid of your car, but maybe instead of being a two-car family, a three-car family, a four-car family, if you reduce one car, say $10,000, in Pinellas County, that means a person with $150,000 house and two cars could then have one car and a $250,000 house. That's a big difference in housing stock in our county without having a pay increase, without changing anything other than the expense you paid for multiple cars in your home. There is a connection to Tampa. I disagree totally with that. The Howard Franklin Bridge will be replaced. Construction begins in 2018. It's in the five-year work program. In that budget is $25 million to build the infrastructure necessary for a rail corridor in the Howard Franklin Bridge. After that, a second phase will be built that is not in the work funded yet, but nothing in the DOT work program is funded after five years. The improvements we're proposing on US-19 are not funded. The 118th Avenue connector, if it's beyond the five-year work program, it is not funded. So to say it won't happen because it's not in the five-year work program would mean nothing is happening after that program. The reason that's important is that connection to Tampa is huge. In the Gateway to West Shore area, we do have the density to build a better transit system. The Light Rail project, and before I begin that, this plan is not a one-size-fits-all. It's not a rail plan. It's not a bus plan. It is, we looked at, because we have 24 communities and a lot of unincorporated areas, what is the best technology, what each of those communities, each of those corridors, each of those business sectors need for transportation. The rail component connects the three largest employment centers with the three most populous areas of the county, St. Petersburg to Gateway to Clearwater. There's 100,000 jobs on that corridor. That's enough to support rail transit. There's 60,000 in Gateway, 30,000 in downtown St. Petersburg, another 20,000 in Clearwater. It doesn't count the stops along the way, those are the employment centers. Gateway to West Shore currently on opposite sides of the Howard Franklin Bridge. They compete every day for businesses. Businesses that want to move in the Tampa area pick either Gateway or West Shore to be in. Once they pick which side of the bridge to be on, they never cross it. And you know why? If we can build a bridge that has rail, express bus, managed lanes, and better access for cars, then we connect Gateway to West Shore, not we've built the largest employment center south of Atlanta. Currently, in those two areas, there's 140,000 jobs. Two airports, a C port, that's where the growth is going to be. We're not going to come and bulldoze Indian Shores or even St. Petersburg. We're going to put the growth where we want it, on the underutilized corridors, where the rail corridor, where the bus corridors are. And that Gateway to West Shore area is that opportunity. The density is already there. It's already allowed to be there, but having a transportation network to feed it and support it is how it will change that trend. We're not going to explode with population, become Manhattan. That's not our desire. We're getting back to a steady, healthy growth. We can attract businesses and attract young people is the goal of this plan. Where it goes down, and you keep, you know, here's the regional approach, it'd be a 65% increase in buses all over Pinellas County. Currently, most of our buses go back to the garage at 6:00 and 5:00. We don't run very much weekend service, hardly any Sunday and holiday service. The opportunity here, when this passes, would be immediate service change. All we have to do is keep the buses running. We don't have to send them back. They can run until 9:00, they can run until 11:00. So very quickly, we can improve the service. The bus that we're proposing gets away from the hub system. Right now, because the buses run every hour, instead of making someone sit on the side of the road, a bench, we put them in the back of every shopping mall in Pinellas County and run them from hub to hub to make those transfers. That's why the transfers are plentiful. Although, the reality is, only 17% of the riders in the PSTA system make a transfer. So the six and eight-odd ride transfer, 17% of the people have to transfer. We can be able to switch that system to a grid system. When the buses are running every 15 minutes, you can take the 19 to Olmerton, and the worst thing that can happen is you just missed the bus, the next one will be by in 15 minutes. We don't have to build hubs. We don't have these 20 and 30-minute layovers waiting for the next bus. It'll be more efficient, and people will use it. It's known all over the country, and even here, we recently combined three routes on Central Avenue in St. Petersburg. We took the south end of the Pinellas Suncoast Beach Trolley with Route 35, and St. Petersburg Downtown Luber combined them into one route. So it's very simple to go from the train winds to the dolly. Now, it's a $60 cab ride. It's one bus ride instead of transferring from those two systems. Running them on 15-minute headways, ridership increased 35% almost overnight. When it's convenient and easy to use, people will use it. That route is a trolley. In the morning, it is filled with people in wine shirts going down the beaches to work in our hotels. It's packed on game day to take people to the Rays, and the tourists coming again from the beaches down to the museums and galleries. We've got eight of those routes proposed. They're both east and west, that'll connect the beaches to the mainland, to where their jobs are, to where they're attracted on the beach are. Where it affects everyone, and particularly here in the beaches, it is a tax law. You individually will have that option of eliminating your property tax in exchange for a sales tax. In St. Petersburg, it's about a $20 increase because the property values are lower, the spending is higher, but if you have a house of over $190,000, this will cost you absolutely nothing. This is not a tax increase. If your property value is more than $190,000, that tax will be eliminated, the one cent sales tax will be replaced with that. It will cost you nothing. We looked at every single financial option that there was available. Gas tax. Pasco County just today raises gas tax 5 cents. Pasco County is going for an 8 cent sales tax the same day we are. There are three other counties that within the next five years have the same discussion right in the Tampa Bay area. So if we are the first to go to 8 cents, we won't be the only one very long, because our five communities looking to do that in the next five years, also improve their transportation network in the Tampa Bay area. We looked at what is it that affects people's spending? Will people go somewhere else? Is 8 cents too high? That does not, any sales tax does not change people's spending habits. What changes people's spending habits is gas prices and how long it takes to get to the store. Those are things we can fix with this plan. You won't have to. You have that option of how much gas you buy, you have an option to use transit, and hopefully it won't take so long and wait four times to get to the lane of Dootcher to get to the store. So really, what we're doing here in Indian Shores, the benefits are doubling the bus system. The Suncoast Beach Trolley is wildly popular. It's a challenging route because you have sort of your version of US-19 on Gulf Boulevard, where it's a single lane and often very crowded and congested. But it is a popular route. It does that same thing that Central Avenue Trolley does. It carries employees to work in the morning, tourists around to your shops and restaurants, and then moving passengers during the day. That route will, the service on that route will be doubled. It will run later, it will run every 20 minutes, it will run weekends and Sundays, which it currently doesn't do. So you'll have that, double the service on that singular route that runs here through the shores. And again, better connections through bus rapid transit connecting the beaches to the mainland. So the other good thing that when we went through this, like I said, we looked at gas tax, we looked at license tax, rental car tax, raising PSTA's adblocker tax, and really, this was the best one. Instead of having between 300 and 400,000 property owners pay the entire bill for the transit system, building a network of not only for a million people but 5 million tourists, we felt that a sales tax would be fairer, that everyone would pay a little bit instead of a small group paying for the entire thing. About 30 or 35% will come from the tourist industry. And again, when you look at other tourist areas, that will not push us over the edge. We're still way lower than anyone else in total taxes in tourist areas. But the important thing we thought too is because it will be a referendum, like Pasco did the other day, they can raise their sales tax in the vote of the city council. Our county commission could do that. We thought the best thing to do, we get out in the community, we listen to you, and we felt this plan for the last five years. We listened to people on what they wanted to do to pay for it. When we asked them, "Do you want your property tax reduced to pay for a transit system?" The answer we heard was no. "Do you want to pay more gas tax?" The answer we heard was no. Actually, the answer we heard was hell no. So what we did was, this way, we'll fund a really decent transit system that'll give people options they don't have. Right now, people can't live in place their entire life. When we went through, through the Pinellas Planning Council and things we've done in St. Petersburg to look at land use and changing the cityscape, what we want to do now that we're built out, people said they wanted to live in communities where when their kids grew up, they didn't have to move to the far end of town because it was more affordable. When their parents needed assistance, they didn't have to move out and move to a different part of town where they assisted living with. They wanted to be in mixed-use environments. They wanted those options where you didn't have to lose your friends, your family, your church every time your lifestyle house changed. We had those opportunities as we redevelop, not again, to tell someone, "You can't have a single-family home." We have plenty of those, but to build these mixed-use places that younger people want to live in, that older empty nesters want to live in, and have transit options for them. So the question you have before you on the rubber floor is, do you want to eliminate the property tax that is on your bill in exchange for a one-cent sales tax to build this better transit system that'll move us around, that'll put us on that competitive edge, to help our tourist industry and to move our county with more options than we have now? It'll be on the rubber floor. It's very simple. It does say "Greenlight Pinellas" on the ballot. It's not confusing. The language is simple. Yes means you want to go for it. No means you don't. There's no wordsmithing going on there. And we want to encourage you to look up the information. You can go to greenlightpinellas.com, which is a PSTA site that has thousands of pages, probably tens of thousands of pages of the information. You can see the charts you saw up there. You can see the financial analysis by third parties that reviewed the plan. And YesForGreenLight is the campaign website, I'm sorry, YesOnGreenLight, that can tell you where the campaign is going, how you can volunteer, questions that you can be asked, they will be answered online. So that's my presentation. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come speak today.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name and your name.
Jeff Banner.
Jeff, the rail line of this proposal, what is the, I didn't get the cost of the actual construction, the rail cars operating, what are we talking about there?
When we did the plan, it was $1.5 to $1.7 billion a few years ago. When you factor in inflation, by that time, we're kind of done construction with, it would be probably about $2.6 billion.
What kind of feasibility study was done in terms of ridership that would use that, these would be a bus line that could accomplish the same thing, I would think, that a rail line could accomplish? Have you done any work in terms of instituting a rail, a bus system that mimics the rail line to see what kind of ridership you could get?
Yeah, absolutely. What you do is called an alternative analysis study. The federal government prescribes a very strict process that you have to go through in order to make those exact determinations. You would do what you term the, determine the locally preferred alternative, which of the alternatives works best for your community. We looked at probably over 300 different alternative routes, east and west, everything from First Street to First, Ford, ML King, 16th, 28th, 34th, the interstate CSX line, and then on the north-south routes, every east-west route we could. Narrowed those down again based on travel patterns, on population, on growth, on jobs, and then looked at the alternatives. Looked at every commuter rail, bus, bus rapid transit, light rail, heavy rail, every one of those options and factored all those in. It was about an 18-month study. It was done by a combination of our, our project advisory committee was two members of the PSTA, two members of the MPO, two members of Pinellas Planning Council, two members of the county commission, and we had a member from the Hillsborough, MPO, and a member of Hillsborough, Hart, to assist us as well. And what it does, then, once you've complied with, like I say, very descriptive process, then that can be, it fits into your application to receive the federal grants. Once you've shown that you filed that, you've complied with that process, and that you met that criteria, you're then eligible for up to 50% of the capital funding from the federal government.
But specifically, is it possible for your organization to create a bus system now, a bus route, that would exactly mimic the rail line and look at and advertise it, do what you do, and advertise it, and see what kind of route? To me, the big, I have no problem with the greater part of the plan. It just seems to me the rail project is the expensive one, and without a real understanding of ridership or the logistics of it, it's $2.6 billion is a lot of money without, and there are alternatives. Apparently, you could try out before you actually built the 8 cents.
Right. And again, those are part of the process. And where, the way it went was, we picked the routes first, and we came up with the routes, and then we've done this kind of transit planning for 40 years. The same routes keep coming up. It connects the three largest employment centers. They come here, made spine, no matter how many times we do that plan. But then we go into the technology. The two final technologies we had were the light rail and bus rapid transit in a dedicated lane. It really makes no sense to put a bus in the lane of congestion with all the cars because it'll only go as fast as the cars. So bus rapid transit in a dedicated lane was the other alternative. We had other criteria because we're built out, we want it for job creation, economic development, and we want to protect our neighborhood. We didn't want to plow through neighborhoods with bus or transit lines, which is why we ended up near the interstate and on our main corridors. The bus rapid transit route, and again, with this study being $1.5 to $1.7 billion for the rail, bus rapid transit in a dedicated quarter costs $1.1 to $1.3 billion. 40% of the cost is in the right-of-way acquisition, and the construction of the lane, whether it has rails or not, the expense is on that real estate acquisition. So it really wasn't a huge savings in a bus rapid transit over a rail. And the other thing we looked at in other communities was the economic development. The transitory development that followed the rail stations, because they're fixed, because the track is nailed down, you get the development of jobs that followed. Businesses don't move next to a bus line. You know, the good thing about buses is that they're flexible and they can move. The bad thing is, is they're flexible and they can move, so businesses are going to locate next to a bus line that can move and relocate. So we chose the rail line, which was slightly more expensive, about $400 million more expensive than the bus alternative, because of that fact that we could, the economic development, the transit development around the country, it's followed rail lines, it's spent exponentially more than the bus rapid transit lines.
Yes?
Yeah, I have a question, Jeff. I want to make sure I understand the comparisons that you were drawing between the cost to a taxpayer paying adblock versus, versus an extra penny of sales tax. Can you be reference to a $190,000 valuable home or something of the sort?
Right. And what we do is, we, there's two different charts. We take the IRS chart on the average income in the area and what a 1% increase in sales tax would cost. And then our local property tax, what you would reduce, would be .735 mils from PSTA. My house in, in St. Petersburg, you're going to see about a $95 reduction in your property tax, and the average income in St. Petersburg is going to generate about $110 or $115 more in sales tax. So it costs about $20 or $25 more in St. Petersburg. The average home in St. Petersburg is less than the county average. A $190,000 home in Pinellas County is that break-even point where that, that cost reduction in your property tax will equal the increase on the average income for these sales tax.
Thank you. Where is written, how will we know that if you need more money, you won't put the property tax back on?
There is an interlocal agreement between, Pinellas County will collect the sales tax. PSTA will zero out the property tax. There's an interlocal agreement in place right now that if PSTA ever raises the property tax in the future, the county will not give them the sales tax.
How is the state involved?
Well, we went a few years ago and asked the state, if they, if this passed, would they eliminate PSTA's ability to collect tax? PSTA is a transit authority created by the state, they're given taxing authority just like you are. We asked them, if Greenlight passes, and I don't even think it was called Greenlight back then, but if this referendum passes, and any charter county in Florida can do the same one cent referendum. So we asked them, if Pinellas County goes for a transit surtax referendum and it passes, will you take away PSTA's authority to collect sales tax? It went through every committee. It passed both the floor, on the House and Senate, and then the governor vetoed. We believe that this passes, we'll put it back on there again, and there would be no reason why the state would allow that to happen. It was a majority vote. PSTA eliminated its own taxing authority, and a majority, and a unanimous vote of the county commission to ask the state to do that.
So right now, at a later date, you could put the checks back on?
If they did, then the sales tax would go away. Because there's two agencies, because the county collects the sales tax and PSTA assesses the property tax. The interlocal agreement that's already signed, if PSTA board would ever at a budget hearing like you just did, raise their mileage from zero, that interlocal agreement says that the county would stop giving them the sales tax. So there's no reason financially for them to do it, and certainly no reason politically when we've been making this statement that we're going to eliminate it. Does that answer the question?
Well, the answer's my question, but I've had many calls where citizens who own property on Indian Shores look forward to a property tax reduction, but they don't want it to be up and down, up and down.
Absolutely. And that's, again, that's why we, the only way we can do this right now is through this interlocal agreement, but it is our intention that, when this passes, we will then go to the state and say, "We've now decided, our community has decided, we want to be taxed this way and not that way. We statutorily solidify that." We believe they will, which they did last time. Again, it went through all the committees, passed by the vast majority of the House and Senate, and the governor vetoed it. We believe if this passes, that sends a mandate that this committee wants to be taxed this way and not that way, and that, that would happen at the state level.
You just bring it.
Thank you. Yes, I, of course, was a witness to all of this that happened when AT-865, which was sponsored by Senator Jack LaBalle and Ann Hoover, and this was taken to the state as a, as a way to message to the Pinellas County residents, a tax law. And so this was taken, and I went to Tallahassee and testified up there through the three committees that it went through, and, and as Mr. Hoover then carried this document and said, "It was just a simple bill." And the, the truth is, is that his pleadings included home rule, home rule, home rule, and so the committees just gave it a pass because of home rule. And, and I know that what that means is, is that it's not my neighborhood, it's your business, so you Pinellas, people, you Pinellas County legislators, you handle this, so we're going to give you a pass because we may want something later, and we'll want you to give us a pass. That's just the way it works, I have found out. And so this time, I'm not being cynical, I'm just being factual. And so it got to the governor's desk, and he wrote a letter, and in the letter, when he vetoed it, he said, "This is a tremendous opportunity for the people of Pinellas County to have a huge tax increase and have it being marketed as a tax swap." So once that was vetoed, honestly, we thought that probably that would at least be the end of that messaging of a swap, but no, they went on with the message swap, and they tried to find ways to, to bring about the idea that it was still a tax swap, going to the IRS website, coming up with sales tax calculations, it's only going to cost you a dollar more here, or $12 more if you live in Margot. It is, I showed you the numbers. It is a huge tax increase. It is $100 million a year more by sales tax. It is every, you know, what it's doing is a huge expansion of the tax base from the way that it is established by the state, which is the property tax owner, to every person who steps foot in Pinellas County will be paying PSTA through sales tax if they buy a hamper. And it is a huge expansion of the tax base, is what it really is. So I just wanted to set that straight because it's like they want to get the governor a black eye or whatever. The point is, is that it, it was stopped because of the fact that it was going to create false messaging.
I have a question I have for you. What studies were done to show how this is going to impact this ecology, carbon footprint that in the future is going to become more of an issue with climate change and everything? Won't the buses and the light rail cut down on our carbon footprint?
Well, I think that they have to do an environmental impact study after we pass it. So I'm no expert in environmental sea rise, but I will tell you that the environmental impact study has not been completed yet. But there's all kinds of evidence that light rail, which is run by electricity, which is generated by fossil fuel, that there's, there's no, there's no environmental plus to that, and certainly not cars stopping all over the county waiting on intersections for trains to go through. Also, I wanted to mention too, that Mr. Danner mentions the dedicated bus lines, and yet he talked about it taking him an hour and 15 minutes, I believe he said, to get, which I, I might suggest to you that you try hard, because I got here in about 30 minutes from northeast St. Pete, and my stuff at CVS in Boston made up. So I didn't, I didn't have that experience this afternoon. But I also want to mention some of the things that are happening that we didn't get into, and that is, is that there is a new connector that has just been funded just about two months ago, and it started in 2017. It is a Gateway Connector. I don't know how many of you noticed that, but it will be a double toll road, just like you see over at Leeway-Selman, coming off of 275, over Bryan-Derry Road. It'll spur and go to the Bayside Bridge, one spur, and the other spur will go to Highway 19. This will enable people to go all the way from the Sunshine Skyway Bridge to countryside without a stop sign. So the fact that we're continuing to put more money in our roadways is because more money in our roadways is because 98% of us use the roads 1.6% arguably two of our Pinellas County residents are using public transportation so do we want to build our whole county around around this and basically what it's about is transitory development developers and and all of the special interests that's what it's about if not then Mr. Serrano they would do a bus rapid transit from downtown St. Pete through Gateway to downtown Clearwater with 16 stops for a couple three years for a fraction of this money and let's see what the ridership is.
Okay Mike let me open the door we've used almost our 20 minutes for the question that's all.
Please I thank you all for coming coming tonight and I want to give you an opportunity to ask questions so you guys already got to go.
I don't know whether you have a plot or not but briefly describe the route system that would take place to leave the rail after 10 years and how many people what percentage of the population in the county lives within a half mile of it?
It's basically it's three stops in downtown St. Petersburg one at then it'll go on the interstate there's two along the interstate somewhere near 22nd 30th Avenue North another one up in the Littleman area 54th Avenue one by Parkside Mall two in Gateway one near Toy Town one near Carillon it'll then go to the airport I don't know all of them south but the other seven or eight are down East Bay Drive to either Myrtle or the CSX line those are the four largest cities and unincorporated areas those four cities total were 400,000 people that live in those cities unincorporated areas had more to that and like I said before Gateway Carillon St. Petersburg and Clearwater have 100,000 employees at those three points of the stops.
Yeah I just kind of we spend a reasonable amount of time in Los Angeles which is a fairly dense environment with populations spread all over the place it has a transit system it does have a rail system okay nobody ever uses it and basically they don't use it because it doesn't you have to have something when you get off of it to go to if you have that destination and I guess I'm missing the utility of that here if if 98% of the people who live in the county use the automobile to go somewhere how are we how are we going to take a reasonable percentage of that population and move them to rail?
Well that's part of the fact with the system being underfunded and money once every hour only the most desperate people that have to ride it do because it is underfunded as you build a system that that works and people where I live are realizing that I'm 20 blocks out of downtown St. Petersburg it's a $2 ride or it's $2 an hour to park it's $22.50 for a ticket goes to $45 if you don't pay in three days and I know that for a fact it's $20 to park in the race it's $6 to park in the happy so you start changing the patterns that again you're not going to take away my car but it might be cheaper for me to take the trolley downtown for the evening if I work in Gateway and Carillon I can get on the rail and if I'm going to Raymond James or Templeton Mutual and even if I don't do it every day it's four days a week I do it I don't have to drive that 20 minute 30 minute ride on the train I can talk on my phone I can work on my laptop and not have to be in the road rage to get there might not get me there sooner but it'll get me there same time every day whether there's a wreck on the interstate whether the weather's bad whether it's tourist season but I won't have to drive or be able to do it there is enough patterns into the employment centers to justify it.
You didn't answer your question did you?
No.
You didn't answer the question.
I'm sorry I thought I said.
No how does the people get from as a rail to where they want to go there's no car transportation?
Well it depends on on the different stops they're all different so when you get into downtown St. Petersburg or Carillon or Gateway there'll be walking distance I mean St. Petersburg is a walking community now that's where the trolleys and circulators can come in bike riding programs you can walk that's where car sharing St. Petersburg has two garages with car share programs we can go in swipe a card and and take a car for the day so other stations along the way will have parking ride centers so you can drive your car to the station and then take it into the employment center for the rest of the route it's all going to depend on each different community each different stop is going to be different some of the stops between those major employment centers in downtown will be residentially developed currently there's nothing there there are warehouses or they've been abandoned by the interstate you can build hotels and apartments there so that the train will be within walking distance of your apartment to get you downtown or into the employment center.
I've never seen a state or a county roll back taxes sales tax second all the people in this community that lives on Indian Shore in El Grande, Reddington they all came here by choice none of us came here looking for a job and we have our own transportation so all that stuff they're talking about doesn't make sense number one it's hard to comprehend railing in a condensed area you're going to be putting rail electric cable overhead for all the railing have you driven over from to Chicago from Indiana you know what happened to Hammond and Gary when they put all the rail the whole area became slums neglected everybody left the noise is deafening and with that condensed area putting rail we have a bus stop in front of our condo I get to see anybody standing there the bus zooms by they ain't there so we don't need it it's an overkill.
To answer your question first if that is your choice to live on Indian shores and drive your car and not use it that's fine we're not talking about Chicago Chicago's heavy rail and elevated the light rail that we're looking at in these other places are silent they actually have to make them make noise so people can hear them they're very quiet and while the overhead technology is coming the new technology that's coming in is fed from the ground where you might not need those overhead lines when you build those systems but again it gives people options it gives people options if you want to live in an area where you cannot you don't have to have a two car garage in a single family house you have that option which we currently don't have now if you want the option that to live in a single family home out of each community.
That's freedom I'm sorry that's freedom of choice you're now infringing on the freedom of people where to live what to have that's not the issue I'm sorry.
The whole intention of this plan was to not disrupt existing neighborhoods that's why the rail corridor is on the interstate where the neighborhoods either don't exist or were disrupted by the creation of the interstate if you get off the interstate and go around the neighborhoods on either side of it they could use a little help so we went and deliberately put these rail corridors where it would not disrupt a lot of people thought we should put the rail corridor right down 4th Street in St. Petersburg that would bulldoze through the old Northeast neighborhood we put it on the interstate to do exactly what you said to not disrupt neighborhoods and give people choices nobody has to use the system nobody has to live in a system it's your choice.
I have a question on the connection to Tampa about six months ago Zadowski asked Brad Miller if there was a connection he said no you just mentioned in your presentation that in 2018 the DOT has a project for a bridge is that am I understanding that right or am I confused?
Yes.
Yes I'm confused?
No.
So you're saying and I keep hearing that and I went through the DOT site I couldn't find any mention of that project to build a bridge right?
They are they are replacing the Howard Franklin Bridge.
I went through their site I couldn't find it I called the DOT and their spokesman called me and said there is no project for that they said there's $25 million dedicated to getting design specifications in case somebody wanted that bridge so you're saying that they're going to go through with it?
Absolutely it is funded the Howard Franklin Bridge the northbound span is 54 years old.
That's fine I will contact you to get your to get the project number for that and I can get that from PSTA?
If I have the project number I can get it on that DOT site.
Thank you.
Jeff answering the previous gentleman's question I thought you I heard you say that you're going to put rail where there aren't any riders where there aren't any people let me ask you a different question in your consideration of bus service have you considered at all the Atlantic City model of using jinnies privately owned privately operated small buses running every three to five minutes horizontally and vertically has it even been considered that's the only question.
Yes we actually have something similar to that in the North County with the connector they are the shortcut away buses you can call it up in North County where it's more suburban you can call 24 hour ahead the bus will pull off the line go into the subdivision pick you up at your door and take you back onto the system to get you to the mall the doctor's office wherever you're going that's something more suited for suburban development we started those last October I think and trying to see how that works.
Okay.
Mr. Danner you mentioned that the alternatives analysis and all of these people got together and studied this in great detail and went through all of the numbers and crunched all of the alternatives and everything and came up with the best possible information they could and in the alternatives analysis report which is also used as an assumption in the Ernst &amp; Young financial analysis it states that the projection for ridership on the rail in 2035 which is 20 years from now is 9,000 riders per day per weekday which is when you would expect the most because they're going to be commuters and if you take the two and a half billion dollars from there as the cost of it and you add the $600 million which is going to be the interest over 35 years because when you buy a house for $100,000 you tell people you bought a $100,000 house but you don't tell them that you paid $210,000 for it over 30 years but anyway it's 2.493 billion dollars capital cost in year of expenditure plus the interest of over $600 million if you use today's interest rate so we're at $3.1 billion for 9,000 riders 20 years from now how do you justify that?
Well I don't I don't without having a quote from you don't know if your numbers are exactly correct and I sent 1,800 page documents.
Well I read it all.
Look at it.
I read it all.
Read the bill.
I read the bill I am not Anthony Pelosi. And to that point you can buy let me just put it another way.
Sarah Mike are you going to ask a question or are you going to make us?
I asked a question how do you justify $3.1 billion for 9,000 riders?
Again I don't know that those numbers are accurate we moved on through this process and it is the density is there the ridership numbers are there that makes us a viable option for people that either can afford a car want the option of not owning a $10,000 a year vehicle and being able to commute around our city other than other than the only way you have now which is to own a car for every single person in your house. You can provide limousine service for them.
Absolutely.
We're early past our 20 minutes. Why don't I give you each a chance to have a short two minute closing statement and we're two minutes.
Well thank you I just wanted to basically close by encouraging the people that are here tonight that if you are an Indian shores resident you need to let them know how you want them to vote because and I know that you want that feedback because it is very important for you to understand that PSTA has gone to all of the cities around Pinellas County and tried to get the city councils to endorse this plan so that they can come forward to the public overall in Pinellas County and say the majority of cities or all the cities endorse Greenlight Pinellas so it's very important for you to let your representatives know how you feel if you want them to do that or not and I will say that no tax for tax you know I've been on this now for three and a half years and many of us have we just completed our first and only poll that we've done so far this week and it was a telephone poll done by St. Pete polls and 1,640 people responded to this question which is basically the referendum question how do you plan to vote on the Greenlight Pinellas plan in November that will ask for your approval to add an additional 1% county sales tax to pay for public transit improvements and 35.9% said yes they would support Greenlight and 48.3% said no so we right now have a 12% if you want to go by this poll but it was done very as squeaky clean as we could do it so that we knew what was going on with all the hard work of all the volunteers so it is right now looking like that the people are are not supporting of this so I hope you have to keep that in mind and again not relationships and friendships that make you may feel pressure so I've just gone all over the county and I know how it goes so I appreciate so much we no tax for tax appreciates the opportunity we've had tonight thank you very much.
Actually I just showed the number of 24,000 rides per day it's what's projected not 9,000 but I've really enjoyed this because we've been going out for like I said seven eight years and talking to the community and it's it's really great to get people engaged to fill the room I sat for eight years on our city council nothing worse than looking out over empty council chambers and people not really engaged so this has been a great exercise in looking and talking to our community and I really enjoyed it and we have heard a lot of people support it a lot of good questions a lot of people against it and I think the bottom line is we really do have to ask ourselves these questions there is no doubt we are built out there is no doubt we've lost population there is no doubt that we're challenged with recruiting businesses to our area and this conversation about how are we going to fix that this is one piece of transportation is clearly a problem in this community I don't I don't despite what side things you're on you spend a lot of time sitting in traffic traffic's under construction but the great thing is again you get that chance to vote this wasn't done on a dais we're getting that chance that's why we're out here talking to people this plan's been changed and modified based on the input from the small communities the north communities and south communities the big cities and it really is your plan it really has been modified and adapted based on all these conversations we've had it's been a great experience and I think it's going to continue to be we've got you know another month or two and the great thing is you get to vote so what we're asking you to do is pull up the information ask the questions look at what you save on your property tax look at what you spend on your sales tax make those decisions yourself on what this can do for our community the options that we don't have and make sure you get out and vote on November 4th thank you. Thanks again we appreciate your time. I may I may comment in the public on any subject but in the beginning of this section I always like to give a.